I'm delighted to be here with you. I send you greetings for WBLS effort in New York. And some of you may or may not know, I host the radio show that's been on the air for the last 20 years called Open Line. It is the number one public service show in the marketplace. And I'm proud to have been with Kiss FM for a long time and now with DLs. So let me just introduce you to all the major players here. And of course, ladies and gentlemen, we are honored to have Mayor Dwayne Warren with us this evening. And the city council, Corporation Council, a good friend of mine, Dan Smith, finance director Adrian Matt. If you would be kind enough to stand, Adrian, I call you Dan Smith, Adrian Matt. Director of Planning Public Works Marty Mays. Director of Community Services Wendy Sykes. Deputy VA Willis Edwards. Police Director Hakeem Sims. Fire Director Michael Dowell. Order of Parking Laser Zone Chris Mobley. Tax Collector Carl Smith. Deputy Director of Community Services Keith Woyster. Keith, you're there. Keith is shy, he has to stay there. And Deputy Director of Planning La Guana Best. This is Best, thank you very much. So in order to begin this whole process of developing a dialogue, we're going to have the mayor make an opening comment, an opening statement. We will encourage and urge all of you with questions to come forward to the microphone right here. And then you'll have two to three minutes to engage in the dialogue and to ask questions of any of these fine public servants that you're looking at. Mr. Mayor, would you be kind enough to make a comment, open a comment?
Thank you. Testing, testing, one, two, three. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank everyone for coming out. This is Dick O'Day, Dwayne Warren, the mayor. I want to thank both people for moderating this evening. This is an important part of the democratic process. I want to make government open, I want us to be accountable. And I want to hear from the citizens on how we're doing, what we should be doing, and how we can improve. And so I thought tonight would be a good opportunity. We're going to do this, this is the first night, and we're going to be in the other three wards in the next three nights. And we're going to be doing the same thing, coming forward to find out what solutions we can have, what contributions we can make, and how we can run a better government. I want to start everything promptly on time, and so I sat outside to make sure everyone got in. Once we did, we're all ready to go. Anything is available, you may ask any question you like, any issue that you like. I'm sure our moderator will pull you in if we get too far afield. But this is an open session, and we plan to be open with our answers, and I hope we're going to be open with comments. With that said, thank you all again for participating.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's begin the dialogue. Who wants to come forward and ask a question? Come on now, don't be shy. Come on.
I know you're not shy.
Good evening, everyone. Maxine Johnson, Berkeley Avenue. Thank you. I am most concerned about the violence that I have been reading about taking place predominantly according to the newspaper, Alden Street, Cleveland Street, South Essex Avenue. I would like to know what is being put into place to deal with these issues which are affecting all of us, no matter what part of the city you live in. Our city is very small. I hate the thought of our city having that kind of a reputation. And we know that at one point there was an article in the paper identifying all those crime cities. I read the paper yesterday, again, a shooting on Alden Street. I read the paper earlier in the week, Cleveland Street. The article yesterday identified not only the shooting on Alden Street, but shootings into homes on Cleveland Street. And I am just so concerned and would like to know what is being put into place to deal with this very, very serious situation.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. It's very, very concerning to us as well because it's our health and our safety, it's where our families are. But there are two approaches, and I want the police director to speak to the first approach, and then I want Chris Mobley to speak to a second approach, a little more comprehensive in terms of actually going after abandoned houses and so forth, and working with our health director Wendy Sykes on this issue. So I want both of them to address the issue.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Some of our approaches are some that you're probably familiar with. One, it will be more involved, police officers. We're going to have police officers in the areas where the violent tasks take place, an increase in number of police officers. And the only reason we haven't had that in the past is because it hasn't been allowed or given the green light, so to speak, by the previous administration. I have now instituted more directed patrols, and directed patrols are police officers in the area. So these are some of the things that we're doing. Some I can't really speak to because they're ongoing investigations. But these things are being addressed, and our hopes are sooner or later we can stop all the recent crime that has been occurring.
It seems that that is the hotbed at the moment, but we know hotbeds will spread. And we also know if you nip it here, it'll move over here. So it has to be dealt with throughout. I remember, I guess he was director, chief, whatever, in East Orange who came into the position, and you could just feel the difference in the city in terms of the bout business, no one lawyering, and keeping people moving, and people knew there was a seriousness in terms of what the police department was about. And I really would like to see that same ambiance. Don't go to Orange because they are really on the case. And I think in terms of quality of life issues, which play right into this. I've been on Hemley Street and seen ladies of the night, and I called the police department immediately, whether they responded or not, I don't know because I kept going. But I'm just so concerned about some of the things that are happening throughout the city that feed into what we are dealing with now in that nucleus of cities. Having been principal of Park Avenue School, when I read that this last murder took place right there on Cleveland near Park Avenue, oh gee, my antenna just went up because there are children who pass that area on a daily basis. Park Avenue, Cleveland Street, we have preschool right there on the corner of High and Park. So there are so many factors that need to be dealt with in order for the safety of all of us as well as certainly our children. So I'm really very, very concerned.
All right, do you have other comments? Yeah, just make one comment, and then I'll pass it on to Mr. Mobley. The quality of life issues are being addressed, and we have a focus, the abandoned homes, because a lot of our clients center around some of the abandoned homes, which Mr. Mobley I'm sure he'll speak to. But the ladies of the night, that is a part of the plan to deal with that problem, and you will see a difference. The attitudes of the police officers have changed since we've come into office. It has been a very low morale before we came in, and it has increased, production has increased, someone's in distress, so you will see it as the time goes on. But I'll pass this on to Mr. Mobley for the last question.
Good evening, Charlie. One of the things that we realize is that individuals are being allowed, say, hey, they're being allowed to reside in apartment buildings, in multifamily homes, where the owners of these properties realize that their occupants are creating crime. And so the city is going to take a very aggressive approach to work with the police department to identify where the problem properties are, let me put it that way. Once we identify where those problem properties are, we're going to bring the bear, all of the resources of the city, specifically our task force and our code enforcement, to go after those property owners to ensure that they not allow those criminals to reside in their property. We believe that by putting pressure on the property owners and by finding them where they are violating the codes here in the city of Orange, that that's going to put pressure on them to move those current occupants out of their property. We believe that that, in addition to the initiative that Director Sims just talked about, is going to help get that criminal element out of the city and to protect our residents and help them move on forward.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mobley. Ms. Sykes, would you like to make a comment?
Attorney Petten, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your current title, Mr. Johnson.
Parking and Water Laser.
Parking and?
Water Laser.
Water. Water is excellent. I'm just glad you're here.
All right, let's hear from Ms. Sykes.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Wendy Sykes, I'm the Director of Community Services, and so I'll speak to the Mayor's inspections Task Force, which I happen to head up. The task force is focused on providing comprehensive, uniform inspections throughout the city. We focus on chronic and immediate code violations in terms of individuals who are, for lack of a better term, criminals or deviants on the streets and utilizing abandoned buildings. We're focusing on boarding up those buildings. We go out on a monthly basis as a team. The task force consists of individuals from my department, the Health Department, Animal Control, Buildings Department, Public Buildings Departments. And what we do is we get together and we go out as a team, pinpoint violations in chronic areas to make sure that those abandoned buildings get boarded up, and we work in conjunction with the police department to make sure that if there are any individuals on the street or that like to frequent that area, the police department knows about it, they come into a sweep before we go out, they do a sweep of the area after we go out, and we keep notations of this information, and we visit and go back until and are closed and/or violations are corrected.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Could you kindly share what your department consists of at this time?
The Department of Community Services consists of the vital statistics, the marriage specific, animal control, and the health clinic, all the child clinics and adult clinics.
You mentioned inspectors when you responded.
Uh huh.
Are there inspectors under your umbrella, Brett?
There are environmental inspectors in my department, health inspectors part of the task force, what we do, we don't just do abandoned buildings, but we go out visiting to make sure that they're compliant. And so there are some inspectors in my department, yes.
When I think of inspectors in the city, I'm thinking specifically of code enforcement. Code enforcement, I thought it was going to be under Mr. Mays, but are you saying it's under your umbrella?
No, that's not what I'm saying. It is still under Mr. Mays. The task force is a collaboration of various departments. So Mr. Mays' department and I work together, the police department, the fire department comes in, because each department has inspectors that will go out and inspect different codes for different violations.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Sykes. Thank you, Ms. Johnson, very much for your time and your willingness to come forward. Who's next? Come on, there's got to be some more questions after this one, please. All right, state your name, please, and where you currently live at.
I'm Stacey, I'm right here at Lincoln Avenue. And I'm trying to call my money, and I'm so excited about being here because I'm the mayor, and I'm sent to your office today, and I'm so excited, I'm on the pie talk and I got everything resolved. They informed me this, I have to talk to them today, I'm Andrew, Adrian, I talked to him today, and he said, you decide this, so I'll have this for you, and I'll leave it. And in addition to that, I wanted to talk about 573, which is the old police station. And I just think it would be a phenomenal site for a library, another library, and so that's just proof of thought. And again, congratulations, I'm just excited about being here.
Right, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments or reaction to that comment?
Thank you, thank you for being here. We did hear you on the campaign for a good opportunity, you need to support. The Lincoln Avenue site, there are still discussions about what's the best use of it, ranges from using it for water education building all the way to some other development that will put it back on the tax roll to generate tax benefit for the city. If that discussion is all known, I'll be bringing it to the public before final decision.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much. Who's next? State your name, please.
Good evening. My name is Julie Cesar Smith, I reside at 383, you know, I got home in Orange. I have watched, I've been living in Orange for 14 years, I have watched several streets being resurfaced, I've watched sidewalks being done, I watched Hager Island Avenue being resurfaced, I watched that sidewalk being done, I watched beyond Scotland Avenue being done. In recent times, I've watched, just in front of the mayor, I've watched Berkeley Avenue resurfaced, I've watched a sidewalk being done. I've never seen, because I have been resurfaced, I've never seen the sidewalk done. I called, and I was told the sidewalk belongs to the homeowner, and I was supposed to do it. However, my question is, the streets that have been resurfaced and sidewalks being done, are they being built for that? That's question number one. Recently, my home insurance have called us and told us that they're going to drop our insurance if we do not clear the cracks in the sidewalk. I think I have watched my taxes go up and has skyrocketed, and I'm wondering, did the people in Berkeley, a week after the Maryland election, did they pay for that sidewalk to be done? Why am I being asked to pay for it, and when can I expect that my sidewalk will be saved?
All right, good question. Thank you for the comments. And just a comment on Berkeley Avenue, I live on Berkeley Avenue, and in the midst of a heated election, there were big trucks that came down my street and started repeating up and repaving it. And wouldn't you know, just a couple of weeks after I was elected, they were all finished, new trees and new sidewalks that we didn't pay for. But that was a paving program that already started before we came to the administration, and it included the street and sidewalk. And I believe viewers, when they get to those side avenues, who's on the street and sidewalk. But I want to talk about the list of streets that we currently have, as Marty Mays is speaking about that, and then I want Adrian Matt to speak about the new bond ordinance that we want to introduce, probably to go back to council to really walk them through and explain what it is. But it'll include streets on it that were repaved because the funds that were given for street paving have been exhausted, but we still have more streets to go. And you think this five ordinance will carry us through to get more streets that are terribly need paved, including the side, something we have. Marty Mays will first introduce what we already have, and then Mr. Matt can explain, it's tedious, but he can explain somewhat of the bond process in terms of getting some other streets done.
I just want to say first and foremost, the mayor is right in terms of when a street gets paved, most of the streets that get paved in Orange are from various grants, outdoor projects like DOT, Department of Transportation, CD, DG. So most of the times when we set out to pave a street, we include the sidewalks, realizing that, you know, it's a city project, so it's included, so those people don't really pay for it. It's somewhat of a benefit, sometimes we even get grants just to do the sidewalks. So, and then in terms of your street, or your specific street, there is a listing of all of the streets that are prioritized by the condition that they're ranked. And we do have that, and I don't think there's been a lot of decisions made yet about how we're going to pave streets. I know Mr. Matt is going to talk about what he's trying to introduce, but there are various streets that are already, when we became to power, there's already streets that are named and already set aside to be done. So there are some streets that are ready to go that we're working on right now. But in terms of how we're going to prioritize them, I think that Mr. Matt is going to speak more about that.
Is the likelihood that that may not be done based on how big you're speaking right now?
It's, like I said, we have a list, you know, it's based on each condition of every street in the town. I'm just not sure which ones are going to be done, and it's also based on the availability of funds. Anybody that's listening, I can provide a list to anybody, it's not a problem.
What's the criteria you're using for the condition of the street?
The criteria, I mean, it can be done, there's a couple ways to do it, but basically, without getting too technical, but every street, when you see like specific cracks or different damage to condition, you can absolutely identify what each of those cracks mean relative to how the job was paid, the years, you know, cars ride over. So it's like, every street is based on a number, and those numbers maybe go from one to 100, and you apply those, and then that's how you get your rank. Anything further?
I don't know, I don't know I'm satisfied with what I heard. I heard there may be a list, chances are it's on the list, they might, based on the conditions, it might not meet the criteria for the condition, so...
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
My suggestion is, he's indicated a willingness to sit with you. If you're willing to make an appointment with him, I think he will go into a lot more detail, and from all that I know of him, he's open and willing to listen and respond positively to your comments. Excuse me, remember when you said the Director of Public Works, Hillsong Avenue is on the priority list, as far as that I know, at least all the qualifications and conditions to be one of the streets that will be done. Can you give your judgment? Okay. Your follow-up, you're trying to lead the line?
We hope Seven Oaks Road is also on that list, so I'm going to speak to that. First of all, congratulations to you and us. You're a fresh air here in the city. Many of us voted for you by looking through your literature and so forth, wanting a change. So we hope that you and your administrative team will truly make a change.
Can I stop you?
Yes, Bob.
You're not really judging for very little time. Does these wonderful people, um...
I'm in Zollamells. I reside at 507 Oaks Road in Orange, New Jersey. And like Maxine, a former educator, I was the state district deputy superintendent in North. And now that I'm retired, my eyes are on the city of Orange. They were on the city of North for a long time. But I have time now to ride around in Orange and see what is in Orange. And Seven Oaks Road is another street, I've lived on it now for close to 40 years, that has never been touched. And even when we were called Public Works, sir, we would get complaints about how they couldn't, they didn't have the materials to fill in the holes and things of that sort. Orange needs to have a maintenance plan, or a five-year plan, or a long-term plan, or a strategic plan that would allow the citizens to know when things are going to get done. We've had meetings after meetings with administrative teams in the city, and we've had, heard the same stories as the lady sitting there about her street, that, oh, in our particular case, I don't even think we would consider it, because we're on Seven Oaks Road, it's a little curb, and cars don't frequent that, and it seems that the streets that are normally dealt with first are the ones that have the many cars on it, and then those of us sitting here paying all these taxes don't get a doggone thing done. So I'm really concerned about the services that did not happen before you, and what your plan might be in order to service, so that Orange can become the beautiful city that it was when we bought our homes. Orange was absolutely gorgeous, but now it looks like a ghetto town. And many of us have given our lives to the city, would love to stay here, but now you're thinking about leaving because of the violence and because the city isn't kept up. The beauty is no longer there, the services aren't there, the taxes are up, you can't get your home reevaluated or revalued or whatever because now the way that they were valued before, we're paying taxes on that, and the values are much lower, all kinds of things. And I'm not going to say I feel sorry for you, but we take on these jobs, we take them on because we want to make a difference, and I'm sure you want to make a difference. But the public needs to know, what is the plan, what's going to turn our town back into a beautiful township? What's going to get rid of the thugs over there by the high school and the arns that are burnt and hanging down and so forth and so on? What's going to make Orange a beautiful town again?
Let me just give a little footnote. Ms. Knowles has been in this community for, well, in excess of 30 years, Mr. Mayor. And I happen to know that person, but she's been around for a very, very long time, and a dedicated observer of what happens in Orange. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you for your question. And your service, I met you, I was a little boy, my uncle Billy Brown, the Senator, worked with me on education, so thank you for your service. I was happy to come to Orange, we bought my mother's house in 1995, and then we moved a few years later, my wife and I and my children, because of its, the way to home, and we want to maintain them. And when I got involved in public service, I said, if no one else can get the job, then we got to get involved. We who know, we who can have the energy should get involved and do so. I set off to run there and to try to turn things around. There has been some neglect as a high taxpayer as well. We did see neglect, we did see things that we didn't like, and so we got involved. And so I'm going to ask you to stay involved. But it's important, though, the issue that you raised about the plan going forward. I want Deputy VA Willis Edwards to speak about our plan going forward, and even that, our finance department can get a chance to speak, but it's important that he talk about also how we get to that point. I spoke to members of the city council, and they too are looking for a plan and want to find a direction to go, and we're going to work as partners to move in that direction. So I first want to have Willis Edwards talk to you about the plan going forward, and then want Adrian Matt to respond regarding how we get there physically, and then if Ray Wingfield could just speak quickly to whether or not Seven Oaks Road is particularly one of the lists, that would be helpful as well.
Thank you.
So good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening again, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Willis Edwards III. I just want to kind of speak to a direction, and I just want to make note, I see Council Noah Corbett in the front row, and I happen to see Superintendent Lee also walk in. And those are two individuals who are part of this plan, because it's a part of the plan that deals with the executive branch and also working in collaboration with our legislative branch and also working with our school district. One of the things that you've heard over and over again as it relates to, what is our issues and how we're going to address crime, how we're going to address some of the issues dealing with abandoned properties, how do we deal with issues dealing with taxes? Well, when we came into office, one of the things that we faced was the tax collection rate at 86%. There wasn't that, hard homeowners weren't paying taxes. What we had, we noticed through doing our research and sort of doing a parting, is that we found out that these corporations are coming to certain communities, purchase these properties, use them as rights, and don't avoid paying their taxes, and it causes an extreme burden on the rest of the taxpayers. So what we started to do is go vigorously after those individuals. But I want to kind of talk about some of the other cost-saving efforts that we're sort of going to act as in terms of dealing with what our five-year projected plan is in terms of, you know, we have some immediate action plans, we have a short-term plan, we have a medium-term range plan, and we have a long-term plan. So let's speak to some of our immediate issues right now. Our work, our parking. The city of Orange doesn't have a parking authority. And what does that mean? Currently, right now, we have about 60% of all of our parking needs throughout our town which are not working. which are not working. What does that mean? That means a loss of revenue. When you take in a comparable town such as South Orange, which has approximately eleven thousand less residents than we do, they take in an excess of a million to two million dollars annually. Orange takes in about seventy-eight thousand dollars. That's lost revenue. We have to do something about it. We have to change that. The only way we're going to change that is by making a capital improvement investment into our city. I heard some of the comments as it relates to, um, certain streets being paved and certain things like that. Orange has a failing and an old infrastructure with our water pipe system. So when you hear, uh, issues that are, that are happening and it relates to some of the underground piping and those piping systems not working, when they have to go inside the piping system, what we're trying to do is repave the streets as well. But we don't have the money. So what we're trying to do is trying to work from each item by item. There are a number of things that we're trying to do right now. You'll hear us talking a lot about rightsizing government. What we found as we started moving forward was that there were a number of positions that we had sort of got away from. We started contracting these positions out. It was possible to save a lot more money to contract these positions out as opposed to bringing those positions in-house. And what is happening with that is it's making us less efficient in terms of us governing. We're trying to bring those systems back into, into, and making sure that we have Orange residents sort of serving those positions and other individuals that are qualified to make sure that we have the type of revenue and expertise necessary to move forward. In terms of our capital improvement plan, like we kind of go along with some other areas. We'll pass it over to Mr. Matt to talk about the capital improvement plan. Because of the capital improvement plan, it tells you situations such as the fire car. We have fire trucks that on their way to fires break down. In less than a hundred and fifty days in office, we have had incidents where on at least three separate occasions, fire trucks on their way to a city have broken down. It puts residents at risk, it puts the city at risk, and it puts the residents' lives at risk that are in need of those essential services. We have to do something about it. But what's the cost associated for making those types of capital improvements? Well, for example, one fire truck is estimated to cost a million dollars. We don't have the money necessarily to go out, but there are needs for us to do that. So those are the types of things that Mr. Matt is going to talk about. Uh, police department, we have police department. We have individuals who don't have vehicles. We don't have enough vehicles, we don't have guns. We have individuals who are using their own private, um, funds to sort of operate in their daily function. Those are the things that we have to address. Those are the things that you'll hear about us talking about. How do we build on the success of future?
Well, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Matt, for your questions and for the concerns that you've expressed. My name is Adrian Matt. I'm the director of finance. And there are a number of things that we are doing in the city of Orange in order to move on forward. One of the things that you're focused on is controlling the cost of government. We have asked all the park to take the tightening of debts. We are restructuring the way we do business in the city of Orange. We're putting controls in place so that we can minimize costs and we're monitoring the money that we spend on individuals. There are some other things that we're doing. We're looking to identify additional or new sources of revenue so as to reduce the burden on property owners, on homeowners. We're looking at a revat, a lot of new said about the way values are out of balance. And so we are currently working on putting a funding in place to take care of a revaluation going into next year and hopefully by two thousand fourteen, we're all done and there will be a rebalancing of the state. So we're working on that. Additionally, we're trying to strengthen our tax collection rate. We want to make sure that everyone pays his or her fair share so as to eat the burden on, uh, our property owners in the city. And we are making a concerted effort to collect all the dollars that are due, due to the city of Orange. We are looking at capital investments in the city of Orange. For a very long time, um, there have been capital needs that haven't been properly or appropriately handled and taken care of. And so we are currently looking at a capital fortress to tune with seven million dollars that will provide funding for a number of the capital projects that are needed here in the city of Orange. We talked about the road. Mr. Smith mentioned the road. And so we are in the process right now, in addition to the list that my colleague, Mr. May, has mentioned, we are in the process of having conversations with members of the government body so that they could list their priorities as far as streets are concerned. And so we are looking at putting about four million dollars in the streets. And these are some of the things that we're doing. We know that we've got to deliver the services and in order to move on forward, there's work that we have to do and we kind of will do what we can.
Looking at the point of counsel, John, after. Is Seven Oaks Road on the list?
Hey, Ray Wingfield, Deputy Director of Public Works. And I agree with Mr. Matt. We take, for example, East Thorns, when they refilled all their streets, they did a bonding process. And we didn't die in need of trying to bond to complete our streets. Other than that, I cannot guarantee you that Seven Oaks Road would be primary, one of the primary streets.
It won't be because it's a, it's a little private little road. It's an older used shape.
No, I'm not taking...
But if you want me to stop talking, you better get my street on that list.
No, I'm not going to, that, that, that is not what I'm saying. Just what I'm saying is that we have Fairview, we have Lincoln Place, we have...
We have lots of streets. I understand. And you know what? I'm not a pitcher for Seven Oaks Road. I'm a pitcher for all those little streets who've been neglected so long. And it's about time that it's there.
And I truly agree. And, and the way to go is to bond to get most of our streets together.
We support you and just, just get something done and get the city moving forward.
If you're willing to support me on that issue for sure, between Mr. Matt and the mayor and the BA, we can get that job done.
Are we going to hold you accountable?
I just need your support. Don't forget me.
You got it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And, and do you have any follow-up?
No, I'm, I'm very pleased to hear that it's real, that's a real plan. It seems like we now have an administration who's going to treat the city like a business and get things done. So that pleases me. But I am going to hold you all accountable and I think you may see my face in City Hall all around. Thank you.
Trust me, Mr. Mayor, she will. She will know that, do that. Hello there. State your name, please, and your current address.
Hi, I'm South East Street, one eighty-five, South North Line.
That's it.
And she was talking about Seven Oaks Road. I can give her a quick second.
Is, is the mic...
Second round.
Is the mic on?
I'm not, I'm not going to say it. I am part, part of...
If you can speak into the mic.
We, we changed the, the city, you know, when we, we, we got together. Because before, when we came in, the schools were segregated and everything, every, other kind. But of course, my, we had moved from there. And, uh, they were surprised and my daughter was so smart. I didn't want, but they were. But anyway, getting back to them, it's a whole history of them. And they, everything they're calling Seven Oaks Road, Seven Oaks. And people don't know, Seven Oaks, it's only two roads, not two four roads, but two roads that are really seven oaks. But the people got together, let's call everything Seven Oaks and people will come round. I agree with the whole issue because we changed the government. We changed the government so that we do not have all the race business that we, we had.
Uh-huh.
And so there, this Seven Oaks Road, she was talking about, it's a whole history of that. And that has nothing to do with Seven Oaks Park. But what my most thing is that, and I'm so glad you had this meeting. And I got to say this, your policeman, I wish I had one closer like a puppy because somebody was trying to break into our house. And they came around and they broke the windows, they took down the mirrors and gutters for see what they could get out. And we didn't know the noise we were hearing. We thought it was the fellow that we had called to come to clean the gutter. And after a while it got louder, no. Then my daughter was getting ready to go. And when she went downstairs, she saw that the front door, the glass had been broken and everything yellow. And so right away she called the police. Police was there so fast, we could not believe it. They caught the guy too. They got him. But he, they broke down fifteen windows in our house. And you should see how they left it. And I have to pay for all of that. But I, what I'm concerned there, ma'am, of course, my taxes, because my taxes are nine thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
For real?
Nine thousand four hundred and eighty-seven and fifty cents.
Four hundred and...
And fifty cents.
Are you sure? Are you sure that's the right amount? Because I look like four doors away from you. Okay.
Is it counted?
It says, it says, uh, your preliminary tax bill is nine thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. I'm going to have to, uh, talk to my good, my good buddy, Mr. Smith. Tax, taxes are a big concern.
I want you to know that I've been in Orange for thirty-two years.
Right back to the mic.
Okay. This is what my taxes come from. And you're talking about, yeah. You're talking about bringing people in. Who is, no one is going to be coming to live in Orange. If it was any way I could sell my property, I would get out of Orange because of what is going on. Well, all of these, what we're doing and, uh, we, we are not really looking at that much for our children. Now, a whole lot of this stuff is caused, uh, from the former mayor. And I'm just glad to see that you all are having this meeting so the people will know what's going on and what you're going to try to do. And so, because when I first moved in Orange, I was told that the, for, even though someone was saying, why do we have to clean these streets and everything? From what I know, the city owns, like, two, I mean, a, a two-block, you know, a, I forgot the exact number. But, and that is because if the city wants to ride, make the roads wider or snow. But you are responsible, even though it's not, they say it's not your, but of course we got to make it when the snow comes, rain and everything, we got to, uh...
Let me ask you this question.
Yes.
We're here tonight to focus on issues that are important to the community as a whole. What's important to you? What, what do you want to tell the mayor and his staff? If you could focus in on that, that would be greatly appreciated.
What you're saying that, it's not important to me to pay all these taxes?
Oh, no, it is. It is.
And I, and, and I'm getting to the reason why.
Okay, okay.
Because they are, from what I understand, the reason we have to clean the sidewalk, because a certain amount of that belongs to the city. So if the city ever wants to widen roads, they do, they're done. And when I first moved there, uh, they decided that they were going to, they, it, too many people were not paying their water bills and things. So they're going to make it so everybody has to, uh, pay the water bills from the outside.
Right.
Well, okay, what did they do to me? They said, what we're going to do, because your house is so, it's not really that big. Because the three big ones don't fit in the center. But you, we will dig up and we will go underground. But we can't come to your door because I have a lot of steel and everything around my house. And, uh, so they said, but you will have to pay for it. And they came up to what they said, and if you pull on that, that's there. You see a little, little, uh, thing looking something like this.
Right, right.
And this is where you, uh, that, they said that is for what they was going for.
Okay, but what is your essential complaint so that they understand exactly what you're trying to do?
My essential complaint that I'm glad they are talking to the people and letting them know. And my complaint is that the, my street light was out for I don't know how long and I had to keep it, I kept on and on until they put it in. And another dangerous thing, and they don't make the people clean the sidewalks. And don't realize that if one of these kids get hurt on that snow, we're, who, that I want to pay for than these other people who are paying the high taxes, we will pay for it. But we shouldn't have to pay for things that the mayor and people are, are know they're, are not behind. And they know that, uh, people don't have any heat or any water or whatever. And at the farthest the water is concerned, everybody should keep, look at that. They send you the water thing. Our water is cracked. It's horrible. It rusts, everything is rusty. And they don't clean it. And when they do, well, they never even said to us, some of our neighbors said, well, they call us until it boils water three, four days.
Right.
And the water just comes in all rusty and everything. And never, I never got any calls for that coming in. And right now, as I said, I kept on and kind of made him put my light on because it was so dark in front of my house.
Yeah.
And that, uh, was after the people tried to rob the policeman.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, let me apologize first. One second. No, I apologize.
And I am telling you...
I apologize for interrupting you.
I'm new mayor and people are here that you don't, apparently you don't know it.
I do.
And, uh, okay.
But here's the problem, here's the problem. We have a number of people who are, who want to share their, their issues and their experiences. What you have touched on, very relevant and very, very important. No one's taking from that. But we, we heard you about the high taxes and your concern about, about the cleaning up of the sidewalks and all of that. One more issue you could put before this August court.
And you did not hear that when the trees fell in my yard, that one thing fell on my head.
Oh, sorry to hear that.
And it's affecting my memory and everything. And the money, and I call the president. And the money that was sent, supposed to been to give me, uh, they said, because of the mayor and what is going on, the money was stolen. And I had to pay all this surgery and everything for my own self. And, and as I said too, also, that they, they, they're saying, they, they're saying everything is seven o, seven o. And I want to know if the mayor knows that, that big house, when you go in the circle up there, there, in that house, I looked at that house before I bought the one that I have. And in that house, there, the people have, like, they had upstairs, there's seven bedrooms. They've got room in every bedroom. And I want the new mayor to know that, fine, are they paying the taxes I'm paying? This is what I want to know. And also over there where the other big, uh, 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 house, which is really just a part of the building, they would have been there. They let some person come in there and buy half of the yard up. We fought it and we lost. And they said they were changes. They, they were changes. And right now, they're trying to sell. And I, I want to know if these people are paying taxes for it.
Yeah, if I can correct you, I need to correct you. On that issue, what you're talking about is the Reverend's House on Elmer Drive. There was an attempt, there was an attempt to subdivide that property.
They did subdivide it, don't you...
They did not.
Yeah, they did, they did. We fought it and they did.
I'll tell you why they did.
They did.
I handled the lawsuit.
No.
And we want that lawsuit, there's a deed that restricts their ability to subdivide. They cannot subdivide.
It did subdivide.
All right.
It's subdivided.
I love this lady.
If you were on there, I know that I tell the truth.
Okay.
And another thing, what you don't know, right in the... And another thing, what you don't know, right in the front, uh, one of our councilman's house, there is a light laying down there, and it fell over, it's still, it's still lighting there.
Reverend's House.
Yes, and if one of these kids come by and start playing with that light and get shocked, who's gonna pay for it? You and I who are paying all this.
Thelma, thank you very much.
That's what you're gonna pay for.
Thelma, I have to cut you off, my dear.
We got a new mayor and I'm going to talk, I've given up my hat, and I'm going to talk. And I know what I'm saying, many people around me don't even know what's happening.
No, but people... Thelma, in all due respect, Thelma, in all due respect, Thelma.
I'm talking to you.
Thelma, it's important, Thelma.
But you're not telling them the truth.
Thelma, it's important for you...
If you're not gonna tell the truth, don't talk.
Thelma, it's important for you to share the advice with other people.
And I...
You've been talking now, you've been talking now, you've been talking for ten minutes.
I wanna know how much taxes they're paying, they've won two lots in there.
Okay, it's a legitimate question, let's just say.
Here, look, look, I'm gonna talk until you're, you're out of my town.
Okay.
Now, I'm telling you, why on earth, if you believe that a little kid would come by there and get shocked, that is just laying there, and can you believe a councilman would let a light lay down and believe me if a little kid gets shocked or hurt? I'm gonna pay for it, not the councilperson, it's gonna be the people who paying all this tax.
Excellent, excellent, Thelma, I gotta cut you off, I have to cut you off. Thelma, I have to cut you off, and I'm trying to be respectful.
Because I'm trying to be respectful too.
Yes, but you've made your point, I think that you've made some legitimate points, but now you're starting to impeach us.
And you didn't have to pay for all of this stuff that hurt my head.
There are a number of people who would like...
Well, I don't think anybody's unhappy that hearing about all these things that are going on, they don't know. So, but I just want the mayor to know I'm back in for this meeting.
Get him on mic.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Smith.
Yeah.
Hey, I'm directed down to the fire department, I have Deputy Chief Sackel over here.
Yes.
Um, Deputy Chief Sackel from the fire department. If you could give him the address that you're talking about, the light, where the electrical position is, we will send a fire truck here to, uh, check that out and take care of the problem.
Is there, is there?
It's, it's on Elwin Drive, Elwin Drive, that first drive.
Right in the front of the councilman's house?
If you could just see Deputy Chief Sackel here, he can write the information, he'll be able to assist you. Because we do have other people that would like to...
What about the councilman? Can, can you tell them?
He's not here at the moment. Thelma, thank you very much for your, your contribution, we do appreciate it. And he, and Thelma, you've been heard, they heard you very clear and very loudly.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out, uh, Mr. Smith, uh, we do have an open door policy, so if you call my office and ask for a time that you're able to leave, I'll sit with you and leave you all the way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Thelma, very much for your time. Please state your name, please, and your current address.
My name's Jeff Coleman, I was at five oh seven seven oh four in Orange. Mr. Mayor, congratulations on being elected director to your, to a group here. I, I just have a couple of questions, comments. Um, we, we talked earlier about crime, likes to know from you, is there any, is there any proactive attempts to provide, uh, use of armed, positive alternatives to crime, to gang activity such as after school programs or anything like that? I don't think you can arrest that way, out of crime. That's the first thing. And, uh, the, the second thing is, what are the mayor's plans for encouraging economic activity to increase tax base in Orange? And the last thing, um, if you mentioned, um, short-term, long, medium, and long-term plans for the future, are there any plans to put this information online, um, so that we all can kind of see it? Uh, hold you accountable to it, timelines, metrics, so that six months from now, one year from now, we can go through to the fire.
All right, thank you very much, I'll see you later.
Thank you for the, thank you for the comment, raising those issues, because they're very important. Um, if the one thing, let me just go, well, I'm pretty important to the frame. Uh, I want to refer to direct the question about, um, instead of just arresting after the crime, we will, prior to the crime, to get this, to get known people engaged and others engaged as well. And I want Deputy Director Todd Warren to address that issue. And then in terms of the plan and the availability, I want the Deputy Vince Administrator to address the issue in terms of us having the mayor's roundtable of development, mayor's roundtable on business, so that we can get a plan going forward, how we're gonna publish that plan going out. Uh, also want Keith Royster to, to address that question as well. Because a large part of this is gonna be communication, how do the citizens fit in, how do the business people fit in, how do the families fit in into the master plan, that's the communication. So if I can go in that order, Deputy Director Todd Warren from the police department, and then for the economic plan, Mr. Ellis, and then Keith Royster with the time and communication.
Good evening, I'm Deputy Director Todd Warren, Orange Police Department. Uh, one major initiative that we are implementing is the Orange P A, Police Athletic. We are now starting a power program, and it won't just be about sports. We're gonna have cultural and socially oriented programs, because we're, our objective is to develop well-rounded young people. We're gonna have gang intervention and prevention programs. And it's not just for the kids, but we have a collaboration between a group called SOS, a nonprofit organization, and they're gonna come out and teach parents about gang intervention and prevention, what to look for to, what to look for in your child, to determine whether he or she is involved in gang activity. The power program will have manager boxing, um, academically oriented programs, all types of sports, music classes, dance class, and in addition to field trips and other programs to nurture well-rounded young people.
The other thing I wanted to add to that, thanks to Todd, our fire department, we're having a, uh, junior firefighting academy. Um, that'll bring young kids in, train them, um, they'll go through, uh, semi what the fire department does, it's like the firefighter's team today.
All right, well, thank you very much, Todd, and Mr. Mayor. Uh, madam, but state your name, please, and your current address.
About to continue, call the station, what do you want to order?
As the mayor stated, uh, we're, we have a community service personnel that are, um, working on a, what's called an explorer program. Uh, as such, minors are limited to handling certain pieces of equipment, but basically, as a mentoring program with schools, firefighters that go in there, we're gonna start this, uh, explorer program where young people can get a taste of what the fire service is like, whether they would like to make it a career. Um, and we have a few of our fire officers and firefighters who are volunteering to step forward to start that program. We should be working on it by January, hope to have it up at one end on my new gates.
There are other, there are some, I just wanna go through the list, because we, these are important programs that we don't always hear about, but they're very important in terms of the city's collaborations as well. Um, we also have a junior police academy that's online, that works similar to the junior fire academy. Uh, we partnership with nonprofit organizations, Not Orange, a new organization, um, that's been spearheaded by Councilman Corbin, partnered with them on anti-violence measures. Then there are other things that are more academically, like the Mayor's Circle of Excellence that we're gonna have going to the high school. And I gotta comment on the participation of our superintendent, Mr. Lee, been very involved in terms of partnerships with the administration, in terms of trying to redirect our kids' positive paths. But that program will take kids, it'll get them exposed to a whole myriad of activities, different professions, they're on a trip. Um, we already have a, can, can you answer me? We already have a trip planned to, uh, Washington DC, where they'll meet their congressmen and their senators. Uh, hopefully we get Rockwell, but I don't know about that. There's a Mayor for a Day program, um, that we just started, and that the first Mayor for a Day, I think, will serve in February, and every month they'll have a Mayor for a Day, where they'll get involved in the political process. So there are a number of things where young people can get involved in that are not needed, that point to the positive direction. And it, it's, and you're right, sir, there's some things you have to do upfront, uh, to stop some crime, go to some of the areas that...
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam, will you be kind of state your name and your current address, please?
I'm Mary Rose Brett, uh, we started at four oh nine Old Park Street, here in Orange. And I want to say that I've been in Orange since nineteen fifty-six. I'm before somebody would leave them there. And I can tell you that it's been so many changes here, Orange, and nothing like the used to be. You know, you know, shape, line, fashion. And it really needs to be changed some things now, that these young people on the street. And for some of the older ones on the street. Not all kids, not all kids is doing this change. And, another thing, there's a lot of vacant street. And I wanna know, do you know, and I'm sure you do, who the owner of these vacant lot? They should be cleaned and taken care of because it makes the community look so abandoned. We try to keep the quality up, but there's abandoned houses, and you see people going in and out. The grass is this high, the trees are like this, they're heavy. Some of the neighbors tries to keep it clean, but they don't feel like it's their responsibility. And I feel like the city knows who the owners are. You know who owns it, tell them. And it should be that, there's lots to be cleaned and fill the owner's.
All right, well, thank you.
That's just the owner.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, it's a two-tier approach. One, we should cite the owners when they don't clean it, and our task force is beginning to do that. The other part is, even if an owner doesn't clean it, uh, Mr. Wakefield here goes in to clean it. When they clean it, they're supposed to leave, which means they'll put a lien on the property. The other part of the process that hasn't been done up to now, and we're gonna start doing, is after they leave it, we talk to the law department to actually file suit to collect the lien money, or to get the property turned over for auction and sale. And I, I want our tax colleague just to give a brief comment about some of the things that we did in terms of when we got properties, and what we're doing with it, and how much revenue we, we expect to get from it. Just collect taxes, he doesn't pay us a lot.
Thank you for the question, Mayor. And, uh, I'd just like to point out that we do an aggressive approach, as far as enforcing our, our non-payments, uh, putting tax sales, increasing our collection percentage. Our percentage has increased from eighty-six percent to almost ninety-one percent already for this year. The process of conducting it for the first time, it's known as a, a signed bulk tax sale lien, or what the bundle, denied tax sales certificates, value of approximately two point two million dollars. It's an excellent investment for here in Orange, for residents, for investors. So we are taking an aggressive approach. We've already introduced M S D program, it's taking effect already for this year, the rest of this year, until the seventh thirty-first. If you have the liquid taxes, bring your taxes up to date, we will not charge you any interest, you must pay all your taxes up to date. So we are taking an aggressive approach to enforcing and collecting. We also understand that we are in tough times, these are the tough times in America today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Did that, uh, did that satisfy you? Do you have a follow-up question you would like to ask, man?
Uh, well, another thing I wanna say is, uh, the policemen, um, I'm gonna say it like this, I don't think they're doing their job, really, on Old Park Street. Old Park Street is like a bandit's people. Once in a while you see a policeman move in. But then I have seen things, and I have pictures to prove it, that where there should have been some action taken, it was nothing done. I have the picture, I, I mean, pictures don't lie here. So I feel like I could show you pictures instead of telling you, because you probably wouldn't believe it. But I feel like, and that is the parking, you got signs up about the parking, those signs cost a lot of money. And we tax pay, pay for those signs. And I think it really should be improved.
Can I make a recommendation, ma'am? That you arrange to meet with the police director who I know is open and willing to sit and chat with you, if you have proof of something, would you be kind enough to share that with him?
Sure, I would, I'd share it.
Public Works for the Bronx.
And Public Works works as well. So, if you could just wait a moment, until the end of the meeting, get their contact information, they'll be more than happy to speak to you.
Uh, actually, ma'am, there's a resource sitting right to your left.
Okay.
And you can speak to him right now, and let him know what you have and what your concerns are, we'll work on that as early as...
Okay, well, I'm concerned that we have a local police, uh, invisible down Old Park Street in that area, because of the flood.
Okay.
And especially in the south.
Good point, good point. Talk with the officer, and then you can talk with the Public Works director as well. Thank you very much, ma'am, for your comment and your question, we do appreciate it very, very much. Sir, would you be kind enough to say your...
My name is John Neville.
What's your full name and address?
My name is John Neville, I live on two one three nine Avenue, South, I'm, I'm two three nine Avenue, near the VA hostel. Um, I'm gonna save a lot of, you know, some things I would have said, you know, because, uh, I can always go to the city council meetings and there are a lot of complaints and things like that. But I just want to say, uh, one thing, um, as far as the city's future, I don't know when the mayor got into office, which is recently, whether he was surprised at the city's finances or what he knew about them. I want to actually grade the city's finances as to whether it's A, B, C, or D. And we note that over, across the country, those of us that read newspapers know that a number of cities are going bankrupt. Now, I don't think that's happening with Orange, but I'm just saying that, uh, that, that's anything to granted, I know. But listen, uh, I just wanna say, I see here in the city's future plans that they're gonna have an urban renewal project. And I was thinking of that just two days ago, and I was thinking, I said, is there really no heart to this city? I've only been here since nineteen eighty-two, but, you know, it's long enough for you to look around, and, you know. So I, there's really no cultural cent- center to the city, it's like, you go to Main Street, you shop, you go home, the next day you go to Main Street, or go to supermarket and buy something, you go home. There, there's really no gathering place, like, say, South Orange, around that train station there, where they have a little community, of different shops and, and, and different places people sit on the sidewalk in summertime, and, you know, have a little, uh, recess of some kind. Uh, and I noticed there in this program that the city does have a, a project that, I suppose is gonna be sometime in the future, sometime soon, to develop, uh, the South Essex Avenue Urban Renewal Project. But I also noticed that it's gonna include sixty-four moderate, market, moderate income residential units. Now, I'm also moderate income, and I'm not high income myself, but the thing, the thing about it is this, this is a basic community to New York City. When you think about living near a train station, especially, uh, if you're gonna have sixty-four of us who's moderate income, I would suggest that somebody think about having some high income. I did have a, a urban renewal project, I don't know how soon that's gonna be, but I'm looking forward to see what kind of project it's gonna be. Uh, and, uh, that, that you're gonna put some kind of energy there, make, you know, make them stay in Orange. Uh, but, you know, we're looking to go someplace, maybe Florida, Georgia, Alabama, anywhere, you know, but they, they may stay in Orange if that's the case. Because we have to have relatives in New York City and different places around here, we're not trying to run away from the city, but, you know, people do have to know, you know, what the future plans of the city is, and whether it's gonna get better, whether it's gonna stay the same, whether it's gonna get worse. Now, what, what people talking up here tonight, it's like, they mostly think it's gonna be worse, but I don't think that has to be. And with this new administration, I think, you know, I, I, I hope it's gonna be bright in days ahead, and, uh, so I'm seeing with that, and that's our chief comment, and I thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Mayor, you come up?
Yeah, yeah, there are a number of projects on the horizon, and we're getting renewed interest in Orange every day. I was surprised during the campaign, that, that campaign was early, at six fifteen, the Orange to catch the trains. And I was surprised about how many people from out of town use our train station and would move into Orange if the housing stock were there for them. And so one of the first things I did when I got into office was I met with the Department of Community Affairs and the president, and asked them what their focus was in terms of financing developments. And, uh, the director, who's from Orange, agreed with me that there's a shift from low-income, affordable housing, to high-income housing and ownership, and that was a key part of it. And that was a key part of it, ownership. And so what he's driving, was driving developers now is, they're able to get tax credits, not because they're building low-income homes. They're getting tax credits now because they're building units that you can purchase, units that are higher income. And so, uh, Joe Applewood, one developer who's over by Harvard on Central Avenue, where it's West Orange, that project is ready to go, DCA money from the state, that project will be higher-end. He's looking, a very ambitious project, to bring his project all the way down to where Robbo sits, to demolish that area of first-class shopping center, then have, uh, upper-scale homes. Of course, you know, RBN Development wants to build right by the train station, we're gonna be meeting in Trenton tomorrow around that project. That'll be twenty homeownership condos, that'll be, uh, market rent rentals they're splitting there. On South Essex, one of the projects that we talked about was moderate income. But you shouldn't be hung up on the word moderate income, because moderate income still means a pretty high income. You have to be in sixties and over the seventies in terms of income, so the rent is not that low, it's not low-income housing. There are no more low-income housing, uh, plans actually on the dockets. Well, there are some from the Housing Authority that are building, that, that want to build some low-income homes. But they're not gonna be on the prime real estate right near the train station, where the biggest value is that we're getting at this point. Uh, if you look at the projects, that was where the Old Colby funeral home is on, uh, on High, and you go into those convenience, that's not low-income, that's gonna be ownership and high rental. So the developers are understanding a couple of things. One, they look at New York and see where the trains are. And New York people are saying that we want to move west, we want to be near a train station, and we want to be in an urban area. And for me, that's spelled Orange. Uh, given where we are from ports with two-eighties, where two-eighties and the train, and there's talk with transit to have another stop for, direct stop in New York as well. Those things we think will prime the area, developers are, are, are ready to go. Their financing is in place, and they have to go through the approval process. One of the things that we did with development was, we told each developer that we'd like to sit down with you, find out what it is you want to build, see if that fits in with revision. Go before the council to get the buying, that okay, here is what should happen. And then go back, tune their plans up, and start to build. Uh, and that process has produced about four developers who want to come in, uh, tomorrow to look at the hospital site and develop it into either, you know, two plans, and whatever spectrum we're on, these plans are out there for Orange. One, high-end residential units. Two, some kind of big-box retail target, uh, those kinds of stores. It's that kind of interest that is here. Uh, but that's, that's, that's gonna be the biggest development project, obviously. But the other projects in terms of high-end development, and for rentals, ownership, and condo living, is definitely on the horizon. People from New York are coming, they're asking us what's available. Uh, and that's one of the reasons why we're looking at all the vacant, uh, properties that are available. And we're going after very aggressively the law department to say, either you better pay your taxes, drive your own speed, or leave, because there are a lot of people that want to come in and invest in Orange. Once they heard about this happening on the train station, other smaller investors are nabbing into the neighborhood to try to buy the properties, put them back on the natural roads. That process has to be controlled, so that it don't have an over-blooded market. That's something we're gonna inspect very carefully. But the development in Orange is coming, property value increase is coming. We have to manage it so it stays for the law. Thank you for your question, and we will have, the mayor's now people development in the city. You'll see information, or you can be a part of it, or ask you to join us when he enforces from the White House.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, sir, and, uh, can you state your name and, and call the rest of us?
I'm Sharon Lawrence, and we live at six seventeen, uh, Seven Oaks Road. Congratulations on your, um, appointment. Um, my issue is also quality of life issue. Um, the Highland Avenue train station, um, the vagrants. And the fact that we pay the same fare as South Orange, but our service into New York is very, very substandard. I complained continuously, and, um, they said it wasn't possible to get direct trains into New York. However, with Hurricane Sandy, it worked, because other individuals had come down to our train station to get out of, in and out of New York. Um, the trains in and out of New York are normally between twelve and four, so I don't know which community they are serving, but definitely not the people working in New York. Um, the vagrants, the situation is getting worse. In addition to that, I've lived in this area for about twelve years, initially on Abel Avenue. And in two thousand and three, my son had, was coming from tutoring a young man on Truman Avenue, and he was shot by someone who was doing his first gang kill. Uh, he survived, he had police from Orange, he had police from East Orange, he had police from the world. Um, I never heard anything more about it. So when I walk from the train station, if I do walk to where I live, on Seven Oaks Road, it bothers me when I see the guys is hanging out, close, you know, that area from Central Avenue and, um, the fire station. And I wonder if someone could possibly do something about that. In addition, with regard to your, um, your, your, your point about the FDNY children's programs, is it possible that you could probably have a partnership with the FDNY? Because they have a lot of those programs, and I know that they partnership with other small cities. Okay, I don't know if you could look into that?
Uh, well, let's get a response.
We can definitely look into it, because we're always interested in, in good partnerships. Uh, but the issue regarding, I'm glad to definitely, uh, be a answer that, because we actually, these issues have come up, can be very disturbing. It's difficult as to why, just keeping fixed on that. Uh, we think we have a solution, we're gonna meet the New Jersey Transit tomorrow, so we'll let the Deputy B.A. speak to that. And let the police director speak to the issue of crimes surrounding the train station. I can't even say that we should be very aggressive, go right at the train station and take care of business. Uh, there's issues with transit police, and our police, um, in terms of the immediate area, like this, I'll let you speak to that. Would that be go first, then?
Well, um, first, uh-
Just one minute, does anything?
Well, can I just add a question for a second? Let, let, let's just stick with, if we can, if you can allow us to do this and make it easier. Let's just address your, your wife's questions, and then we'll, we'll come to you.
Okay.
I just want to kind of go back to the Highland train station. We've had several meetings with New Jersey Transit, um, with respect to the Highland station in particular, in terms of, one, cleaning up that area surrounding Highland train station. So what we've started talking about is developing a plan, one that includes the city of Orange Township's, Public Works Department, and the New Jersey Transit train station, to make sure, some of that property that sits there belongs to New Jersey Transit. So what we've been trying to do with New Jersey Transit is hold them accountable, to making sure that they do their diligence and clean that area surrounding the Highland station. Uh, in addition to that, we've talked to them about expanding, making that a direct stop to New York City. They have given us, uh, communication that that's something that they aren't able to doing, and something that we're working towards doing, and we're looking forward to going in the next couple of months and making that in the hour. Uh, in addition to that, there's something that the mayor, um, has tasked us with doing to sort of service that area in the Highland station, uh, that we're hoping to unroll in the next couple of months, is a shuttle service. Uh, so we partnered with the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey, uh, and have been in conversations with them to receive some sort of grant dollars to provide us with shuttle buses, so that we can provide those types of services as a jiggle, as they have in South Orange, to sort of provide that service. So we've had those conversations, uh, we've sent over the letters, I've been back and forth to New York on three separate occasions, and at this particular point, it looks very promising that that's going to come to fruition in the next couple of months.
And the police director?
As a thanks to the train station and the vagrants in order, uh, as the Deputy B.A. mentioned, there was always an issue between, uh, New Jersey Transit and Police Department, who was responsible. Uh, however, we already take the position that it's sitting in Orange, and great for being surrounded, so we usually respond to areas. So if you have those issues, please don't hesitate to call. One thing that we have done, uh, which was not done before, we have parking lots, in which the officers pull up to a certain area, instead of just sitting there, they'll get out and actually walk around. The train stations and other hotspot areas that we call, uh, when we give the term, uh, areas that are of great, uh, concern to us, we make sure the officers go there. They get out of, out of their vehicles, and they are visible. Uh, more often than not, we're doing that during the rush hour times, we know people are coming down the train station, uh, off the trains. Uh, so from that point, let us know if you see a change. I appreciate the call. If you don't see a change, then we may have to change our strategy. But we'll keep doing it until something happens in the process.
Thank you very much. Yeah, uh, you spoke on, you didn't find out about what happened after the shooting?
No.
Uh, that was last. And, uh, I'll come with my question, um, my issue is a two-fold. And, uh, first of all, is, we do have these meetings, and after these meetings, there are no follow-ups. We have to create a media, a channel whereby we could communicate after these meetings, to see what is happening and know what is going on. And, uh, my suggestion to this is that we should, um, establish a website. Because the internet now, I mean, everybody, everybody uses the internet these days. So, um, something like this would be useful too, for, 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 of their selves and keep even know about what is going on. Because, uh, man, it was, uh, on the other edge. And, uh, when you look at the website, always laughing. And that's what I'd say. So I hope something could be done to that.
Maybe the strategic plan for that website, you know, information, so-
Or your video, your long-term, your short-term plan, all that can be on the website. But people could keep them updated, so they're getting bored of this thing. And that's how we, I mean, we get, start pushing things up, everybody gets bored. Um, secondly, I, um, I was brought up, uh, to understand that, um, uh, an answer of prevention is a bit, is better than a power of fear. We just had the hurricane, we see what it did to us. We suffered down here, we care, um, there'll be expenses and putting things right, and discomfort to the people as well. And, uh, if we just walk along the streets of Orange, you will see that, um, the primary electricity field goes in between some branches. And, uh, I don't know what it really done to that. If we have that hurricane that's greater than this, we'll suffer the same thing again. So, Mr. Mayor, I would like to know what you were doing to prevent further discomfort and loss in terms, in terms of monthly phone to the, to the city. Um, uh-
Could you guide to the truth?
Let me refer that over to you first. Uh, let me start with the first one, as it relates to the website. Um, we had Deputy Director Keith Oyster. The website, what we're working on right now in terms of the website, and it's taken a little bit longer than we anticipated, but what we wanted to do is we want to unroll it and make sure it's done right. Uh, in terms of making sure that there's accessibility, there's an ability for residents to pay their taxes online, there's ability for residents to pay their water bill, to get essential services, to pull down documents, to receive information such as the long-term plan, the short-term plan. So our hope is that by twenty thirteen, January twenty thirteen, we can unroll that plan. But it involves several different components. One is that it has to go off an RFP for certain services in terms of who's going to be our, um, our collective agent, such as the bank that's involved. So we just can't put that out there. So some of these things, we have a prototype that's basically done, but we just can't unveil, unveil it right now until we get all of the components together. We're working on that right now. So that's something, you know, you can look forward to in the months, the months ahead. And the mayor speak to the trade tournament portion.
Thank you. Uh, we, we don't have our emergency management, uh, directly here, but it probably should be good for him to be here, just to talk about how we got into Hurricane Sandy, and, and to make, uh, our lives a little bit easier. Uh, I pray that we don't get another Hurricane Sandy. But i- in the event that we do, we're prepared. Our, our preparedness came out of our discussions at Public Works when I tasked them to start to develop a snow removal plan. Uh, on the heels of completing that plan, Hurricane Sandy was announced, and immediately turned our attentions there. Here are a couple of things that we found through Hurricane Sandy. Um, that we do have to have the resources to take care of trees. That our communication system, uh, has to be top-notch. Uh, the, the other part, the human part, we had neighbors looked out for neighbors. City hall was wide open, uh, their churches, Councilman Cordy Church, Ebenezer Church, uh, was open to feed. Volunteers came. We called everyone together. Superintendent Lee had schools open for warming station, we had schools open for kids, when we had, uh, the celebration, they could just come into the gym and just get out of the house. But I want to refer to Marty Mays in terms specifically of tree trimming, and about the blood needs necessary. Maybe Adrian Matt could chime in in terms of how fun he got on.
Uh, Marty Mays, um, about the trees, you know, we did have over fifty trees fall here in the city of Orange, most of them were uprooted by the wind. Not many of them were actually cracked, or we did have several, um, trees that, uh, did absolutely crack. Um, the question is interesting, and, you know, it's not just Orange, but it's all the cities got hit with this storm, and you talk about the future. There's a lot of debate right now going on about these type of storms, and what people should be doing. Obviously, the best thing to do since we all went through it is to prepare yourself for it. Uh, and in reference to your question about the utility lines, you absolutely right, most of the utility lines, uh, go through holes that are planted, and there's a lot of talk, and there's a lot of debate now about cities requiring, uh, new, uh, development to actually go underground. So there's a lot of chatter now about those issues surrounding the storm.
We do appreciate you taking time to, to come and ask that question. Sir, would you be kind enough to state your name and your address?
Paper project four-six-two Berkeley Avenue. Okay, I have, um, basically four questions for probably, for different departments. The first question is, uh, well, a lot of municipalities save money on their debt service by looking at, uh, their outstanding bonds, to see if they're, if possible, refinancing or-
Give me a question.
Or, or, um, or, or, or re, re-achieve all the bonds. Is there anything like that on the table, or is there any analysis, any activity in that area going on right now?
Currently, we're going through all of our current loans that we have, and looking at those debts, and sort of where it's appropriate, maybe with the right regulations, just, uh, looking at finding these refinancing of our loans.
Yeah, I, I hear that.
He said, uh, they're, they're looking into the current debt, and, uh, where the opportunities lie, they're gonna try to refinance to lower the interest on the bonds.
Okay, how, how far along is in the process?
Sorry about that. Um, we're, we're pretty far, that was one of the high priorities in terms of the mayor's, uh, request. Uh, our Director of Finance, um, has been going through the numbers, we have been sitting down with some of the patients, looking at those, and, and as we speak, there's actually, um, discussions taking place with city council in terms of where we are bond-wise, and what we need to do, and proposing that going forward. Um, and a few contacts in our, our office would be happy to sit down with you, to go over that with you. But there's a priority that's right now, we're proposing, um, to look at that debt service.
Will that information be available, when you make the decision?
Oh, absolutely, yes, absolutely.
Okay. The second question is, uh, concerning a string of properties on Oakwood Avenue, right near the Heska Station, right off Temple Avenue. Uh, in March of two thousand and ten, they, they, they burned. A good friend of mine, I remember that day, a good friend of mine put all of his salvage belongings in my basement for me to use. The property is still there, what's the status, like, demolishing or doing something about it?
They've, they've been turned over to the Housing Authority for development. Uh, we met with the Housing Authority about a week ago, about what their plan is, because, the request they made of the city to turn it over to them, we completed that process. They had some legal regulation Friday coming in, we cleared that up, and now we're able to turn it over. I think they're just clearing deeds, and now they're scheduled to be abolished because they're gonna have new development.
Next question. Um, I, I've tried in the last five or six years to, um, um, I, I've inquired about properties in the valley for sale, a lot of vacant buildings that have been there for, for decades. I've basically run into a stone wall the whole time. Uh, I never got anywhere beyond, uh, being referred to a toxic waste cleanup telephone number. Um, aside from certain agencies that I won't name, nobody else seems to have access to those properties. I'm wondering who I would speak to to find out what the status is or if they're on the back for sale.
If you come to our office and leave myself in the tax collector availability tomorrow, we'll have a list of those available. But you have to do it quick because when I came in, there's a procedure whereby you auction off property tax liens. There's another procedure that's not often used, but it allows you to assign tax liens to someone who wants to take over the properties and start for the elevators. I instituted that process and it's going to be completed in December?
Yes, sir.
I think it's December 16th or December, it's mid-December that process will be completed. So you need to come in much before that time.
Okay.
Because some of those properties are valuable.
Final question. This has to do with lease questions. I looked out my window in horror the other day to find that the lease items that I paid fifty cents a piece for were being taken and I stacked them up like nice, nice little lease soldiers on the walkway. They're being thrown in the street and they were bursting open like balloons and being scooped up with a bulldozer. I called to inquire, you know, about what the policy was. I thought the policy was that you had to bag your lease and then pick them up. So for me to have seventy-five bags thrown in the street at fifty cents a piece, I just want to try and get some clarification as to what the policy is.
As your neighbor, and as a witness that you strictly kept your bags. I feel your pain and concern. Can I just tell Debbie, Deputy Public Works, address the matter?
Deputy Governor Winfield, Deputy Director of Public Works, that complaint has come directly to me, that issue has been addressed. The policy is that you must bag your lease, that is correct, and that issue has been addressed back to me with you.
And what is it, can you just address the issue that you feel the, I know, pretty limbs out of the curb. I know you've been given leeway because of the storm, how long will that last?
Yes, prior to the storm, once the storm took place, the mayor gave a public service address that we were giving courtesy to those owners approximately a week. We extended that courtesy two weeks and we continued, we had, we've been through every street in the south, north and central. And I may be correct, I may have missed a street or two, but it's various streets that I gave this. And at this point right now, we are sending high inspectors out to address the issues for continuous landscaping, going into the streets, home moves, taking advantage of the situation and they are putting out the directors with the city ordinance and regulations and moves are to that effect. And it's giving them one and it's giving seven to ten days to adjust that issue.
Good evening, my name is Conne Maitzel at Three O'Five East with Harris. She asked two of my questions, which were about taxes being the number one. And he said that the valuation wasn't done since 2006. But I've only lived in Orange for three years and my taxes have gone up twice over the past three years. So I'm a little confused about that. Yes, please.
In reference to valuation, I'd like to just give an example. And it's hard to understand in a depressed market since we've had since '06. On the flip side, if it was an increasing market and there was, say, you bought a property that was over your assessment, we cannot just go in specifically to your property and revalue it higher. That's illegal, that's spot assessment. You have to do it municipal-wide. The only other way you could change assessments is the property tax appeal process, which we had roughly 500 last year. Before I was here, maybe 450, 500 per year. So that's the only other way to change it. Now, that does create a lot of inequity because the people that haven't taken an appeal share the brunt of that, the ones that did get the relief. The only other way is if there's material change to your property, like an addition, new construction and stuff like that. But we don't specifically reassess each property. We can't do that by law, we have to do it uniformly. Yeah, but what I did say, after the revaluation, there are tools that Essex County's really on top of it with some of my colleagues and certain computer programs we have where we could quickly look at neighborhoods. Not doing more than 50% of the neighborhoods, but if we see that they're getting outside a quarter or range, we can adjust accordingly in addition to board without going to outside vendor to do that, to adjust it accordingly.
All right, thank you very much. Your second question.
You kind of answered part of the next question too, because you guys come in and assess the property.
Can you talk into the mic now, talk into the mic so people could hear?
Certainly.
That's good.
Why are people penalized for taking care of their homes? If you take care of your house and you take pride in your home, you're living there for a period of time. I'm asking why you're penalized for making your home look nice. Any single thing that you do, they want, they want you to live in a seven-ounce, pay the higher taxes so you're carrying the brunt of the weight of the entire town and you can't do anything. Don't do anything to your house, it's like, I mean...
Cash 22, right?
It's, no, it's not a cash 22, it's for real, it is a shame. Like, I'm young, I want nice things, I have a nice home, I entertain, oh, you can't do that because of the tax office. My friend was like, are you serious?
To answer that.
It's not normal.
To answer that.
And it's not like that in other parts of the country.
To answer that question, what you're discussing is if...
I understand that this is for political purposes.
No, not necessarily for political purposes, but when assessments are done uniformly, there's a model made basically that unless there's a great dispersion, that house is average, has average baths, average kitchen. And then if there is a material change or substantial renovation that potentially could increase the value, then there could be an added assessment.
Based on the argument, the property, the time to a drastic, so I could have...
In fairness, in fairness, since I started this year and reviewing permits, since we do recognize and we are going through a revaluation, we don't necessarily, just because you do a renovation, just do an added assessment, it has to increase the value of property. So if your property was already a higher value, you wouldn't necessarily get an added assessment. Well, you had an added assessment, not this year, personally this year? Because I can't speak.
Can I make a suggestion, just a suggestion?
Yeah.
And you're asking excellent questions and I admire you for that. Can you and the tax assessor discuss those issues?
You're certainly free to comment.
What are your other concerns?
Well, like on Tremont Avenue, the other question that she asked about the 44 bus fingers, because that's the only interstate in here. I get commute for three hours a day because I work in the city and I'm a native New Yorker, so I'm just being able to have access to things. But moving over here, when I was calling the coach company and they put names here, put you on hold, then I started speaking to someone at New Jersey Transit, it makes it almost impossible and that's the only bus that runs that entire strip from Scotland Road all the way through around the end. There's no, there's no way to even get to anything else, there's no way for me to get to Hyatt Avenue. There's no way for me to get to Brook Church Station unless I spend twenty minutes walking. It's not, you know, a good situation. There are no shortcuts, like it's not hard.
Well, you raise a legitimate concern and to that extent, maybe the deputy PA, since he's dealing with NJ Transit, maybe he might talk to you a little bit about that and might be able to assist.
I was sitting down with a senior guy at NJ Transit and I was documenting every time the bus was late, the time the bus was supposed to come, the time the bus showed up, the bus driver's name, the name, the number on the bus, the whole nine yards, that's the only time I saw an improvement from, oh, that's the only time I saw an improvement, so for a solid year, I didn't really have any issues. But I still stand there, I can only complain about the bus that I take, the times that I take the bus. So I suppose to hear people complaining, like, oh my gosh, this bus is horrible. And, oh, about the schools, that's a whole other story, but...
And that's the tradition you have, the schools?
Well, when I moved from Forest Hills in Newark, I moved from New York to Forest Hills, Newark, my daughter was enrolled in school in Newark. When I called the Board of Education in Orange to find out if the school was a decent school because she was starting from a small school, they laughed at me. So I still had to bus her to school in Newark to go to school every day. So if you're paying higher taxes, I'm just trying to figure out what we're paying for. Because I get the same services at my other house in Newark, I get garbage picked up, snow removal doesn't really happen because I'm like the lady that was before me, I live on the Bed and Street, so when the snow swarmed, we didn't have any access to get to a main road. When they did come in, they cowed the snow and you had to get in the driveway, which made it ten times worse to get out. Last year, we had the snowstorm in October, I didn't have power for a week. Every day I called for PSCNG, they told me tomorrow, tomorrow, with downed lines hanging across the street, when someone's sitting in the car, someone would get electrocuted, but for a solid week, this was last October, it probably didn't affect anyone else in the neighborhood because I lived on that one little street that doesn't really count. But I'm just trying to figure out what we're paying all taxes for.
Okay, I'm asking good, this point...
Lots of questions, who should I follow up with?
The deputy PA.
My name is Willis, Deputy.
I know you can't answer everything tonight, I won't ask.
What I am going to do is I want to invite you to come out and be a part of the transit, the mayor's transit committee, which is dealing exactly with that issue of 44 Tremont, make 44 bus route here. Coach is a private bus company and there's only so much pressure we can apply on them.
That's subbed out by New Jersey Transit, but you gotta say, we don't want you to have this, we want a New Jersey Transit bus. You guys can make that change, we can't.
We've already had that conversation and that's why I'm asking you to come, be with me.
What's your name?
Willis Edwards III. I'll make sure that you get a card, I'll speak to you some, yeah.
Hang around, poor BA and hook up with him, okay?
Uh-huh.
All right, can we go to the next question?
Poor lighting on Tremont Avenue, that's important because the lady said she was shot, I have to get off there if the weather law comes.
Okay, excellent point.
It doesn't matter now, I'm in college. The woman laughed at me long. She laughed at me and I said, I just want to know if it's a school. And she laughed and she said...
She shouldn't have done that, but before you do...
That's what I got, and I bussed her back across town.
Could you do me a favor, could you see Deputy Chi Sacco giving you a name and phone number and add those like in regard to the light and what kind of that...
If you leave, drive up Tremont Avenue, you'll see a star.
If you could just go over and give me the meeting, we'll be able to follow.
You got to be helpful, so they can directly follow.
But you guys can address it, anyone else has more children, but I mean, I personally didn't have...
Okay, sir, if you, we're going to take these last two questions and, okay, last two questions. Sir, if you'd be kind of able to state your name and your address, please.
My name is Luigi Glorm, I live at 611 Berkeley Avenue here in Orange. My questions here are more like the previous resident and it's mainly about taxes. First of all, I'd like to mention the fact that just as taxes increased, I think I've seen a lot of diminished work done at homes everywhere in this town. Okay, and that is a very ugly thing to see. And I'm not just talking about one or two, several, okay? The other thing that probably has happened, as I've seen, maybe 488 Berkeley Avenue is an example, where people probably were forced to rent and therefore, you know, other things have happened, like a burning of the home.
Yeah, the fire, if that...
Right, but whatever, but I'm sure that, you know, you know that there were like twelve cars parked there every day. So twelve cars, unless somebody has a business, I mean, I don't know what they would do with twelve cars parked there. And also, this leads to another situation where we also have here, right across from me, a home where there's so many people probably living there now, maybe renting. And of course, some of the things that I don't want to see is nine garbage cans being, you know, in the front of the street. Now it's okay, but the wind comes around and when the snow comes around and they go in the street, you're going to have problems. Also, on Sundays, we have cars parked on both sides of the street, the street becomes very small. Okay, so that's another problem. Now, I don't know what the situation is there, but definitely it causes a problem, okay? The other thing that I want to mention, just, you know, for the tax assessor, is I've been going to City Hall to find out about the taxes. And the same property that I'm talking about, okay? At this point, my taxes went up to sixteen thousand and I'm pissed. However, I go to City Hall and find out about the other guy's taxes and they used to be twenty-two thousand, now they're sixteen. And I'm wondering what happened. I'm really wondering what happened. I'm paying the same amount of money as this person is doing and maybe by quote-unquote, someone just told me that City Hall allows this person to do what he's doing on a two-year basis because he's got to make up the money that he invested, you know, to whatever, you know, to do his work at the house. That's ridiculous. I wish I could do that, I wish any one of us could do that. Give us two years, you know, to do that, make up the money and I could do anything else I want. I could do exactly the same thing, I could have people renting my house, but I'm not doing it.
But there is a very real possibility that the person may have filed a tax dispute.
Whatever, okay? A property that was improved and was paying twenty-two thousand dollars is now paying sixteen, okay?
Yeah.
It is a little unlikely that that should be happening, okay? Because when the property was in bad shape, the taxes were twenty-two. Now that the house is in great shape, not only it's sixteen, but on top of that, it's being allowed to rent, okay, and make money. We're talking about high money, all right? And that's all I can say.
All right, well, thank you very much. I think I know the house you're talking about too.
The mayor has a comment, sir, sir, hello? Sir, the mayor has a comment.
The street, there's more than one on Berkeley where that's a problem. And they've been cited to go to court as well, one has already got a court date and you want to see court dates for the others coming up. Because what they did was illegal, it was wrong, didn't get the permission and has, they have the status of their property under a false listing with the tax department, it shouldn't be. They probably have to listen to one family when they really have a room in the house. No permission to get a room in the house signed, no permit for it, it's not, it's not legal to put one there. They've done it anyway, so our home enforcement is out citing it and I've asked my home enforcement to go through the block of Berkeley and put notices in all our neighbors' mailboxes so they can show up on a court date to witness what happened and proceed.
Good, all right, thank you for your...